Don't forget to like and subscribe to our YouTube channel at www.youtube.com/fortyninecountynewsTV.
The caller meeting board is here, so let's go ahead and try to get started and we'll wait on item one for Scott says he'll be along here in just a little bit and help us with that one. Just wanted to tell you on item two retail strategies, we'll be bringing that back up on the agenda for a vote on Monday night. We've got to get these folks an answer as to whether or not we're going to stay in or get out. So that'll be up for a vote on Monday night. The crosswalk and sidewalk project that we worked on, we submitted an application December fifteenth of seventeen and it turned down and that fiscal year eighteen funding for the sidewalk project on Highway seventeen that goes to the rec center. But I got word from the transportation department this week that they recycled our application and for fiscal year nineteen, we've been awarded two hundred and sixty-six thousand dollars out of a three hundred and thirty-three thousand cost project. Our part, the sixty-six thousand, six twenty-seven federal share would be two hundred and sixty-six thousand five oh seven. And I got word that we had won that grant to do our project. I talked to Andrea and she said the co-op gave us permission to have a strip of land going right down their line all the way to the rec center without us having to go down to Snokey Bear and turn that corner and build a sidewalk that's really not safe there along the side of the road. But I'd like to let y'all know about that award and I think it's a real worthy project.
Somebody will get, somebody gonna get, kid gonna get one over sooner or later.
It's a nice car going through there.
Nice walking, right? See, I walk around there every day. You'd be surprised what half assed some of them become.
Well, now, the DOT is going to spend some money on lighting there to help us recognize that crosswalk. They're going to do the bright digital lighting for us at their expense in addition to the sidewalk project.
Well, unless it's been changed last Thursday night, the light that is there is hanging. It's not upright. It's actually upside down. It's actually facing and flashing, not even the street. So if it were in working order, it would, I mean, the lights that are there aren't even there. So I don't know why the DOT hasn't corrected that.
Probably haven't been able to notice yet.
Maybe it will when they do the other things.
I know, but in the meantime, if they sit and awarded until twenty nineteen, I mean, there's a light there that's not functional. I mean, it's working. It's functioning. It's flashing. It's just not upright and it's not.
It's not doing any good.
No, if it's been hit by something.
It was on top of the sign and now it's hanging over the sign and it's, I mean, it works. It's just not where it's supposed to be.
You can get some street.
Now, that was last Thursday night when I was walking. I haven't.
Been on the street, been like that for a year.
I know. It's, it's.
If I'd already known it, I'd have called in the DOT and told them, they'll come fix it. We'll put them on notice. I just didn't, nobody's told me the same. This is the first news I have. Well, I'll get on that. I'll make myself a note to call them tomorrow. I'll take care of it. I had no idea it wasn't functioning. Okay, on police automobiles, how much did we get for sixteen?
I think we're going to get thirty, thirty-four?
Thirty-four thousand.
Yes. And we paid thirty-seven for it, so I can get the exact figure if you want me to go get that.
Uh-huh. Thirty-four thousand round, it's a little over what we need to discuss. And we can probably get, it was a four-wheel drive.
Yes.
We'll probably not buy another four-wheel drive. We'll get a two-wheel drive. We can get a new two-wheel drive for about what we're getting out of this wrecked sixteen model, that's four-wheel drive.
That was the only four-wheel drive they had, other than, I think Wayne Hall's Expedition is a four-wheel drive.
It is. It is. There might be a specific reason they needed a four-wheel drive, but we'll probably try.
From a police officer's standpoint, having one or two during inclement weather is a good thing. Because you'll wear a car out with the chains on the back of tires, just a regular patrol car. I take that from past experience.
Okay. Well, that's what I'm saying, maybe that we need a four-wheel drive. I checked on doing sedans. Dodge is the only police sedan that we can get. I don't want any more experience with Dodges. Ford is discontinued. Their police interceptor type sedan car. Hatable took some that they'd had on order. I looked at them up there, knew a few weeks ago. I checked with Ronnie and he looked into sedans and he said Dodge is the only thing that's available in a sedan model for police work. They got some Chevy pickups. They got Tahoe's. SUV type vehicles available. He said we got at least five thousand dollars worth of salvageable equipment that came out of the wrecked Tahoe that can't be used in another style vehicle too. We'll have to throw that away if we don't get a Tahoe and replace it.
So before you mentioned that there was a problem with the cooling system with the Tahos and that's one of the reasons you were against them. So are you thinking about going with a different type of SUV?
Well, I was told, and this is only hearsay, that idling those engines for long periods is rough on them, hard on them. Did you hear that information?
I did. That's what I was told, that they were not made to sit and idle. It created problems. But that was a problem they were addressing with the new models. They were supposed to be making some adjustments and changes to adapt, for them to be able to run. But I don't know if that's in the eighteen or future models.
And you've got a dog in a cage in the back room. You don't need to leave him locked up with the motor cut off. And you've got a computer at stake that could malfunction if it overheats. The police leave them running for different causes and they idle a lot, unfortunately, in the summertime especially, because of the heat. We haven't, as far as I know, we haven't bought anything to replace this vehicle. We just got the settlement numbers on it.
Yes, I haven't even gotten the check.
But I can't, I probably can't get a sedan like I was planning to, except a Dodge. So we're going to have to probably find out what's available first say before we order anything. Maybe another week or two before we have that nailed in. What I want and what I can get are two different things. I was planning to go to sedan, my working vehicle. I just don't have any more experience with Dodgers. There's a new VA clinic that just opened. I believe y'all had a story on that today, Scott. Which building did they go into?
Actually, I'm not informed on it. I was having a baby whenever that became out.
You were beast.
Wayne, do you know which building they went into?
No, I'm not sure anything about it.
It's housed on the same campus as the hospital grounds. It's on.
Is it the back, the back building?
I bet it went down there and Dr. What's his name?
I think Dr. Tomescu's.
Yeah.
I don't know.
Today, the pictures, it looked more like the Tomescu building. I was thinking it's going to be in the Dr. Kerr building down there, but there were some pictures of Al O'Boit and some other veterans in the paper today and it looked, the pictures I saw looked more like the Dr. Tomescu's.
I knew that, I'd seen some cars in front of the old Dr. Kerr building.
But I know when the ribbon cutting's going to be, so if any of y'all would like to be at the ribbon cutting, it's the twenty-sixth of September. I've been invited to be at that and I plan to go to that, so if any of you want to go, it's at ten o'clock on the twenty-sixth of September. Mr. Walt Johnson has asked us to allow him to put a restaurant at his residence. It's over on the street that Mr. Larry Dunn Nix has his home, Christmas Tree Farm. He lives out that street across on the fourth side of the street, I believe. And I think it's all residential out there. He mentioned that there's a business there, which is a Christmas Tree Farm business, but it operates like maybe a month and a half out of the year. He's going to serve food. He says three days a week, you'll have carryout orders at this restaurant. And he wants to cook hamburgers, chicken fingers, and third thing.
Fish.
Fish. I see. Gee, he got it right. That's the three things. He said that's all he'll be serving, only carryouts. And he'd build a, he said, I'll build a nice building that'll not detract from the neighborhood and it'll create traffic in there. And I just, I've talked to the attorney and the zoning board and they've said, of course, it would take some action there. But he wanted me to talk to the council for him this week in our work session, so. All of us love Walt and he's a good guy and serves good food. But I don't know about a restaurant in a residential neighborhood. That's a little bit of an unusual request.
He drove up out the road there. Same deal.
Yeah, even his brother got it.
I don't think he stayed there for a few days. It didn't work out for him.
He said he stayed there long enough to lose about twelve, fifteen hundred.
Okay. Anyway, he's asking us to do that. If y'all want me to convene a zoning council to take this up, I'll be glad to do it. If it's just something we can't do because of the rules that are already in place, I hardly know what to do with this request.
That's what the zoning committee is for, isn't it?
I would think it's strictly a zoning.
I think it's them, yeah. Get that one off right back.
Ultimately, we have the say, but he has to go through them and they have to make their recommendation. And then it'll have to be a public hearing and we'll have to hear from all the people. They make a recommendation, but in the end, it's the council's decision. And so, I mean, that's the place to start is with them.
Okay. Well, I'll get up with the president of the zoning committee and director of it.
And I think they made the fourth, they made the fourth Monday nights?
I think that's right.
Yeah. Especially if they've got a matter to take up. Okay, we'll turn that one over to the zoning committee.
Well, we're in, sir.
Hey, Scott.
How's your one?
Scott, we were just talking about Mr. Walt Johnson's request to put a restaurant over by his home. And the council thinks it would do a good thing to just call the zoning board together on that matter. Or is there something already in place that will prohibit it?
No, I think that would be appropriate, is to go ahead and get the rug in front of the planning commission.
Okay. I'll get it with the planning commission then. I had a gentleman yesterday come in to me concerning renters' responsibilities and what he was alluding to. He has a place and across the street from him, there's a lady that has a house and she has others living in the house with her, maybe some grandchildren and things. There's a lot of ongoings that are going on throughout the night, a lot of nights. Maybe two or three o'clock in the morning, there's motors revving, squealing tires, out in the yard hollering sometimes profanities and other four-letter words and worse he was saying. He's trying to figure out if there's problems like this, that his family has to listen to and hear those profanities and other things. Is there ordinances in place about renters' or renter responsibilities?
I think that could fall under more of a nuisance category, maybe under the noise ordinance, but I don't think it would fit that. But it could probably be classified as a nuisance where the city could come in and try to put a stop to it. Does a landlord, he'd have some responsibility with his tenant to take care of that problem as well?
He said, I wish that the city could do something to help me because, he said, there's a terrible amount of bad language. He said, my wife's a devout Christian person. She don't like to hear that kind of talk. I don't think it's something she should have to be enduring. He said, we can't sit out on our porch hardly at any time now because of the neighborhood being the way it is. So I just, I told him, we'll discuss it today and try to come up with some sort of a solution. That nuisance comes under the nuisance ordinance, did you say?
Yes, sir. And we'll look into that and I'll get the information from you about where he is and what we need to do.
Some police chief over there, have a talk with him.
It's very near one of the most affluent areas in town. I'd say probably the nicest homes in Hammondville without a quarter mile of this place. Our street closing matters. Let's discuss those. And we have three up at hand that I'm aware of, one being property, which formerly was owned by the Nixon group. David Jewell has married one of the Nixon daughters, Hayward's sister, Jepp. And there's an alleyway that was dedicated as an ingress egress to a property. The property's changed hands and it has other ingress egress possibilities now. As well as one of David's brother-in-laws has a road that connects to this property. And he's wanting to relinquish that back to the original plot of land that it came out of. Is that pretty much what he summed up?
That's what it seems to be. You know, out there on the site, there's no road. There's no alley. You can sort of tell maybe where it is just by the way the grass is and the ground is. But there's no, technically, there's not an access. It's just on the maps. And I spoke with Mrs. Jewell last week and she sort of pointed it out to me where it was, which is where I was thinking it was. And, you know, it's not being used now. It goes into less trees. So we need a little more discovery on it just to make sure, but right now, it looks like it's just something that's on the map.
We would have to abandon it as a possible street. And it's not a through street. It's a dead-end street that went to one parcel. Other family members have bought up this parcel and they have connecting boundaries now that, where they won't even do the street. So that's kind of the way that sits. He's asked us to abandon it and I didn't really see a problem with it, but someone else.
Anybody over there, are anybody objecting to it? We haven't gotten all the notices out to everyone and I haven't talked to everyone yet, but that's, you know, something we'll find out to see if there's any objection to it.
Maybe there won't be any until later.
Yeah, it's on the surface. Unless somebody's objecting to it, it's a no-brainer for the city because it's not being used. It's not a.
It's an open street.
But if there's objection, obviously, we need to consider that.
But it's set out in the land division as a street.
Was that a Jewell you said?
David Jewell.
David Jewell.
And now we've got the Baptist Street, which is a short portion of Third, I believe, that needs to be abandoned. And their drawing that they furnished me shows them setting a building under the new proposed building plan. Where the street is now, there would be a building if we're allowed to close that for them. We need to know, I guess, if we close the street, how many of the council are eligible to even participate in this?
And the difference between this and the request from the United Methodist Church and the Jewell issue is, Jewell is more of a private property issue because it just really affects those people that have that property. Obviously, with this request and the United Methodist Church's request, it's a more of a public issue. The Baptist Church here may own the property on both sides of that street. But still, this is more of a thoroughfare that's being used by the citizens, same as the United Methodist Church. But I'll have a clearance on council members that are able to vote on it shortly.
We posted some notices about this here at the city hall and I don't know how many other places we've got those notices public. I don't know if we have any publications on those notices or do we just post those on our?
They're published for four weeks in the journal record and then we have to give notices to the adjacent landowners as well, which we're doing all those.
So we're following all the steps, one, two, three?
Yes.
Okay. These have been formal requests that have been made to the city and we do need to act on them because all of them involve potential or existing city streets.
Now, the one at the Methodist Church, when you sent the letter to start condemning the process or whatever on the parking lot, did you, I mean, we agreed to do that, so the parking lot, that's still in the process. If the parking lot is condemned and the access through the parking lot is cut off, then the access to this little strip mall is just going to be down this road and through the subdivision?
When you say little strip mall, where do you want it to be?
Where the vape store is and the seafood place and.
You would have access from?
From the subdivision.
From the subdivision or you've got the road at the Methodist Church and then,
Behind.
And then, well, the road north of Methodist Church, which is the one being proposed to be closed. And then there's another one, you know, half a block up that comes in to where the baked place and the seafood place is. I think that also goes into the subdivision.
My question is, though, if the road is closed down the hill and the parking lot is condemned, then it's only going to leave access from the residential area and behind the church?
Right.
Okay. So how are they responding to the, or have they responded to the letter regarding the parking lot?
They've never one out. Unless someone scored, we didn't send that letter out, did we?
No, I contacted them, put them on notice about it being used. We wanted to give them time because they came back to us saying, we're working on this. So we're giving them time to work on it. I don't know what they've done at this point in time, though.
Now, you did say that they had hired Heath. Avery. So is he? I haven't noticed anybody working.
I've got some, I've got some new information that can't go public yet.
Well, my concern is, you know, we don't want to, until we sort of know what's going on with what we've already started, and I realize that this public hearing's a month down the road, we need to keep in mind what we've already started doing before we completely.
Close up access?
Right.
The issue could become a little more complex. Just, everything's changing on a couple of decisions. The person who talked to me has asked me not to go public with it yet, so I can't do that.
Well, I mean, all we know is what you told us from the board. And based on that, you know, two anchor stores were coming in and Heath was doing the work and there was going to be.
Right. That was, that was the word that came to me through C three and Ms. Jennings and text messages. I did verify that she had employed Heath verbally. I talked to him and he said he was employed to do a cleanup for them. Since that time, I've asked to be notified if that contract was canceled. And I haven't been notified that it has been. But I do have some additional information that I can't go public with at this point that involves that shopping mall. The, uh... The closings, I'd like to know what happens if they go far enough to become a, a matter of, of public interest. What happens? Let's say we have a public hearing. Should we convene it back at our old, uh, place in, in case we need additional room? Do you think there'll be enough interest to overflow our room?
If I recall, the last time we considered Third, is it Third Avenue? That, um, we had considerable amount of interest. So, that might be the safest way to do it.
Since there's three properties involved and would be maybe interested in some of them, people would have interest in one and maybe not the other. I, I think we'd want to change our venue for that hearing to maybe our old auditorium. For the East Farm, where we have more seating. And I don't know that they're being overflowed by, but just in case. Letters like this, uh, aren't always, uh, complicated, but they could get complicated. Especially, um, as you brought out. The city was under some maneuvers to try to make things happen that haven't happened over the years, at the strip mall. I've been, back and forth was information with some people. A man who works with the county called me and told me the street goes behind, uh, our dedicated street runs behind and down by the hairboat on the backside of those buildings stood up in front of it. So, he seemed to know what he was talking about. I, I can't verify that because I have knowledge. I've just been told, this is what I was told from a man who seemed to know what he was talking about that works for our county.
He said, "The one that I talked to said that because the street did at one time go in front of the building, but then turned into a shopping center, that the street was diverted back behind." So...
So, I'm not sure we've got a dedicated street. People go down through that parking lot to Hardee's using that little section that they're asking to close. But I can't tell you for certain that the street runs behind that little buildings, but I've been told that, uh... You think it might, Wayne?
Yes, sir. When I worked here, that was one of the places that we worked. That we, we only worked the parking lot because they gave us permission because it's all private property.
You're not saying, uh, the shopping center is a good place to hang out and do that thing, Jerry?
Yeah, but we had a lot of people in, in town back then and that's the only reason we worked it for speed or anything is because they gave us permission. But there was a, a road that went back behind that connected back with the, the neighborhood back there.
I don't think that it was ever a public road. I built all those houses back there and we didn't, we didn't have the road. That people started using it.
It says it's Fifth Avenue North Face.
It's never been really used for much.
So, it's on the map. It's First Avenue North Face.
When I built all these houses and things, there wasn't an entrance coming in from there. Some people just started driving it. Go, you don't have to do, just go in and, and find it. Somebody, there wasn't any street or anything through there and there wasn't, that subdivision didn't want one through there. But that, now that's a long time ago.
Well, this actually goes in front, this would be the subdivision. The street's between the subdivision and the, and the, the shopping center.
Right, yeah. So, because making, they made the street, I, I can't tell you from here going down where anybody could drive around, you know, to Keith and, and, 'cause that came up with the city many years ago. And they said, unless you're not in a beauty shop back there. They would come around and go right down through here somewhere where this other day was a trucking bench or something. Yeah.
Pickers, they're pickers.
But...
Scott, do you have anything at our meeting today you wanted to talk with the, the councilor myself about?
No, sir. I think the, those street closings are the big, big issue and we'll try to get all that information ready to go for the meeting on the fifteenth. And what we'll do is present the, the cases of, on each one of them individually and then let, uh, those that are wanting the streets closed to make a statement and whomever wants to say something for or against.
And then we won't vote until the next meeting.
Or unless you want to vote on the fifteenth.
When there's any opposition, I mean, we would need time to consider.
And you're gonna find out if we can vote?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, I'm not sure about you guys.
Is there a set date for that meeting?
Oh, we're...
Well, I know, but if we all abstain, then it's like no vote. So, the other two votes would carry them.
And if one of us slips one way, then one of the other ones are tied.
Has an attorney in town called it not to be closed last year?
He not there anymore.
If he's there, it's no problem.
Yeah, but he ain't, he, he's, he's done that more than once for one or two months.
Does anyone else have anything today? I didn't have a very long meeting, just a few items that we needed to know that were coming down the pipe. I just told them that we were awarded our sidewalk grant for the, uh, schoolchildren going to the rec center. We, we've got that grant approved now and, uh, it's, uh, two hundred and sixty-six thousand federal dollars. We're going to put a match of sixty-six thousand.
One thing I had was for, um, Mike at the street department. He's fixing to lose another employee.
Yeah.
I think the twentieth will be their last day.
Yes.
We just hired somebody, so we still have those applications and I think he was wondering if we could just hire from that pool without having to...
If it's a good pool and that, uh, my understanding was it was a bunch.
Okay. So, we may have to, um, vote on that Monday or... I just wanted to ask about it to make sure we could do it, but I haven't, I haven't decided yet.
We need to, you know, your street closure, I'm sorry. Caution, grab some more, please. Not too full. It's your own house, my position doesn't matter.
What, yeah, yeah, they don't matter.
Sure doesn't matter.
Probably have some opposition, didn't you?
Yeah, I promise so. But I, I don't, I don't, I don't see what, it looks like that might help instead of, or what I understood about it.
I know one thing, I noticed it the other day, that, uh, when that ring those kids kindergarten, they had to park over there a lot and walk across that street twice. I heard them been going after it too.
So, when that road is vacated, will it actually be barricaded and there will be no use at all?
It, it could be, but my understanding is they're going to build something over it.
I know, but until that time, and I mean, once, if it goes through as soon, once it's vacated, it will be actually physically closed. There will be no through traffic.
It, it's a private drive.
Right.
They, they could use it to enter their property, but it would basically be their property at that point in time.
So, the police would have, so basically if it's not physically blocked, it would be up to the church to stop people from, from using it.
Right.
They could block it.
That's right. 'Cause, uh, until they do something, I would imagine they'd still use it like what Mr. Lindsey was talking about with people entering that parking lot. Or they may want to barricade it off and have people enter the parking lot so that the children can cross that street without, I mean, any concern about people driving down it.
I think you can enter it from in front of the gas company entrance.
You can, yes, ma'am.
That would be good to block it off.
And they own that grasp, they'll too, they could make some interest through there too.
I heard the city come up somewhere and talking about, and we, I don't think we've ever really brought it up in council meeting about a seven-year old city hall.
Well, the only thing that's happened is that we discussed, you know, the amount of expenditures we've got right now. We don't think we're getting enough out of the current property to, to build something adequate out here for the same money. So, we're gonna have to spend additional dollars to get a new station out here for the police and courts.
I don't believe so. I believe we'll get, if you, I don't care what the senator or governor, what, I don't give them none. But I believe it'll bring enough money to build a nice, another building out here. If that's what the city needs to do, don't you? Hey, lawyer.
Oh, I don't know.
That piece of property will bring a good price though.
I'd want it to.
Yeah, yeah, it is.
City block.
Yeah, that's what I mean. I think it'll bring a lot more. 'Cause it won't lease the sale anymore. I trust that'll be it, somebody's, and there's some people I think, mm.
I think a church has got an option.
Yeah, I think the church is, that's what I mean, the church is really... Well, it got a lot of new members too. Just hope it's new money. Well, anyway. It's not pretty sitting up there anymore. Make some work then. The building makes some work.
I think we're gonna do some painting work up there right away. And that'll help some to make it look a little better.
What, what have we got, actually got in there that we're responsible for besides the police department? I know there's two or three different things in there, but it's not anything that we are responsible for, is it?
We have the municipal court and the magistrate that collects our fines is there and our zoning, uh, board and ordinances are kind of headed up there. Building permits are sold there, um...
There's nobody extra in there. The cable office came here. So, there's nobody extra there. Unless Safe Place, now at one time Safe Place was going to, to use a small section, but I don't know that they're, they're there.
They've got a place in there.
So, that they don't need extra.
There's some other groups that meet there, uh, some, there are maybe exercise groups and another...
There's some domestic violence classes still meet, meet there as well.
Or maybe we need it then.
The, the auditorium of the court is a huge, huge thing.
'Cause we can't have it at the courthouse. We have to have our own facility for them to have municipal court. And there's a lot of people that show up during that. I mean, there's no way that'd fit in our, our room, you know?
Well, you wouldn't want that here.
So, so...
I'd be embarrassed when it broke me in here.
Some ones just, they really fill it up. They have plea day and then they have trial day. There's two courts per month.
Yes, sir.
And you have your people that are gonna have a trial, they have our hearing, they request a hearing. Those are on a certain date. Then the ones that's gonna come in and plead their case, pay their fines, have show up at another date.
Sounds like we need it then.
The, the regular day, the plea day is, is usually packed out.
You guys have court today.
Yes, sir.
How's the plea day?
Today was trial day and it was pretty, it was pretty full today. 'Cause on trial day, you have what I call mom and him, you know, everybody comes with everybody, so...
Bring their witnesses with them, don't they?
Even if they may have been in Birmingham at the time.
We thank y'all for coming today. I don't have anything else. I have a meeting. We look forward to seeing y'all Monday night or whenever we see you before then.